This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
...regular meeting of the North Haven Public Schools Board of Education to order at 6:30 current PM. Our first item on our agenda tonight is to have Mr. Gary Johns, the head of our North Haven Middle School Building Committee, give us an update. And accompanying Gary is a man whose name I should know because I've seen him enough.
Chuck Lawrence, he's our building's prime...
Chuck, right?
Yes, sir. Chuck, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, that's okay. It's a short here. Thank you, Chuck. We're gonna come and give us a little update on the Board of Ed... on the middle school. Thank you.
Should we come up?
Come up, I'll get your... there?
Okay. All right. We're trying to wrap up everything as quickly as we can, obviously. The major project that came up to us unexpectedly was the replacement of the gym floor. That is completed at this time. It's not... the whole project is not completed. We have to still have to replace the basketball hoop locations. But that, I believe, is operational now.
Yeah.
And it looks great. Unfortunately, we had refinished the floor previously, the existing floor. It just didn't work out. And I think the best... the committee decided that we needed to make the building as new as possible so that it couldn't last another 50 years before it gets any renovations on it. So that's really the major issue. And that's wrapping up. There are a couple of small items, which I have a list here, that we're just kind of checking off on the list. Like date stone insulation. We have some cracked floor tiles that we've discovered in the hallways that we're going to be replacing. Vinyl edging on those central stairs, which has been the bane of our existence since it opened practically. We have a number of commissioning items, which are items that are related to HVAC and the electric system and so forth that just need to be closed out. And let's see, oh. There was a... there's a leak in the gym... one of the gym windows. We've had extensive testing done with pressurized water testing to try to identify where it is. That was done. We found out where the leak is. Then they went out and did some deconstruction on the window frames to determine what the issue is. And that's still in discussion right now with the contractor and the design team. So that's still kind of an open issue for us right now. So we don't know if it's gonna be an issue where the contractor is gonna have to revise the way they install the windows. But in any case, we're... it's always something. So hopefully, this will be our last major issue. But we don't wanna leave the building, obviously, with a water leak. So we're on it, and we're trying to wrap that up, too. We have about, is it $46,000? $46,000 left in the budget after all of the...
Does that include contingency money?
That's everything. Yep. So we're wrapping up these small items. You know, they'll... they might take a little bit of that, but it's not... we don't have a substantial amount left.
May I ask a question while you're talking, Gary?
Sure.
So when you're telling me the vinyl kickboards, I'm assuming you're talking about the vinyl that... on the staircase, the edging on the staircase?
Yes.
Vinyl kickboards? Are the... and the... where you have... do you put exactly where you need to put the re-tile or regrout?
Mm-hmm.
Are your contractors responsible for that?
Yes.
Okay. The same with that window?
The window, we have to determine who's at fault at that, for that. So... and that's one of the issues. You know, a long time ago, the ENO errors and omissions was discussed, and we haven't really drawn a conclusion on that because I'm waiting to see really about the windows to see who's at fault, if anybody, and how that might contribute to their error and omissions report. So that's still an open discussion.
And for this $46,000 that should remain, do you have a priority list of where that money will go?
Really, just fixing these few items that we have and then any... and anything else that might pop up in the next month or two. Hopefully, we'll be done with everything in a couple of months. But I said that last January, too.
Yeah.
I never know what's gonna happen next. So, yeah, we have a list of...
The school is beautiful.
We have a small list of things that... nice things to do. We don't have... it's obviously not enough to do a major project like the track because the gym floor really took the lion's share of what we had left in the project.
And for that gym, and we probably covered this before, because of the gym floor, we were liable for that because of that? The person who polished and cleaned, they weren't?
No, no. What the issue was...
Or insurance?
No.
Okay.
The issue was when the original project was being reviewed, the flooring contractor came in and said, "You know, this is still a good floor. There isn't... you really don't need to replace it. If we just refinish it, it should last another 50 years." Because it was, you know, a solid floor. So they refinished it. We decided to refinish it instead of replacing it. And the environmental conditions changed in that room. Now it's air-conditioned. And the wood, as wood does, contracted as the moisture levels reduced in the room. So it left gaps between the boards. And it left some loosening of some boards, and it just wasn't an acceptable condition. The committee reviewed it a couple of times, walked through it, and decided that we have to bite the bullet and just replace it because that's the right thing to do for the school.
And the safest.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but Gary?
I have some. So for the refinishing... I'm sorry, the replacement of the gym floors, are we gonna... should we expect any reimbursement from the state on the new floor refinishment?
No. No. For... Chuck, you can... you have a better idea on... Chuck?
So we're gonna try to the best we can because the original scope of the work was to replace it. It was because of when the bids came in, we were overbid, over the budget, and that was one of the value... we call value engineering recommendations or suggestions from the contractors because Gary mentioned. So we just refinished it. We're still gonna go for it as reimbursable. If anything that we wouldn't be reimbursed because of the original scope was to would be the finishing portion, which is evaluated at $61,000. We paid $60... the original bid for the trade cost was $226,000 replaced. They offered $165,000 back, so that's about $61,000 to finish it. So that work would be, if you will waste it, they wouldn't participate in that. So our, I guess, our argument to support it being eligible, if they'll support it, is that was our... it was in the budget originally. It was in the scope that was approved by that office. And due to budget, we had to find ways to bring the project back in as a result of eventual savings throughout the project and getting to the end, we were able to reincorporate. So if it wasn't incorporated from the beginning, then they might have, you know, a better argument not to. But we're gonna try to get it to be eligible.
The refinishment of the gym floors, did we try to get reimbursement from the state on those already?
They've reimbursed us for a good portion of the project, I think, I wanna say around 85 percent roughly. Pam and I went and talked to the state, and they've been reimbursing us for pretty much everything we've been submitting so far. We have been holding back estimated ineligible costs because they're always part of the project. But to date, they've reimbursed us for as much as they're gonna reimburse us until the final submission of the...
Okay. So then they had already reimbursed us for the refishing of the floor? The original refishing of the floor?
Technically, they would, yeah. So we've submitted for it.
Okay.
What'll happen is because we're at the end, we have to finalize the project, close it out, pay all the vendors. Then what we'll do is we submit the final... there's change orders we have to submit to them, and they'll tell us what the work is that's ineligible. And that'll all wash... this'll all kind of wash out in the final payment when we go to submit to the state. And they'll let us know if that change order's eligible or not.
At the April Middle School Building Committee meeting, there was talk of reservoir under the gym floor that led to both the smell and in part to the board issues. Can you confirm if this was remediated with the... with the refinishment of the gym floors?
I'm not aware of any reservoir in there. There was no indication of water in there.
It's at the April 4th Middle School Building Committee meeting of this year, and it was a discussion between you guys, I just watched it earlier today.
Well, it might have been...
Reservoir in quotes. People were saying there's like a reservoir of water underneath the floor when the wall...
Oh, I think that was a... somebody was maybe making an opinion that there might be water under the... under the concrete.
There was a robust discussion around the smell.
Right. The smell is another story. The smell is... was... you know, there's been a lot of discussion about what the possible source of the smell was. That, you know, whether there was water under the slab, which may have come up and created some of the moldy smells. I don't wanna say it's mold, but whatever smell was there, that may have been a part of the discussion. But there certainly was no presence of water on the surface inside the gym.
So are we confident in being able to say that at this point, the new floors and whatever remediation has been done will take care of, one, the smell, and, two, the need to provide additional funds to fix the gym floors to a state that is acceptable for the law?
Sure. We spent an extensive amount to seal those floors so that if there was any possible water infiltration from underneath, that that would be stopped by this coating that we put in place. So that was something that we had done, and we had done... we specified a good product, not just a average sealer, so that we could be certain that we didn't have that moisture issue if that possibly came up again.
Can you talk a little about the basketball hoop placement that needs to continue to happen in order to finish the gym?
The basketball hoops were too close together and when they were installed with the refinished floor. So that we said, "While we're doing the floor over again, we'll relocate the basketball hoops to a farther location in the gym."
Yeah. I think they located them so when you... these are the side-to-side basketball courts, not the main court. One side has bleachers. So where they were located was so that when the bleachers were pulled out, the basketball court... the hoops there on that side are proud of the bleachers. Most of the time those are gonna be used is when the bleachers are retracted, most of... you know, and they're... which is probably gonna be, I'm guessing, 90 percent of the time, except for a full event, which you wouldn't be playing side to side. So we wanted to maximize the length of the basketball court and extend those about maybe another eight to 10 feet to extend that court, make it a little bit longer.
For the errors and omissions log, I realize that there are certain things that we might not be able to discuss because they might still be in the works of litigation or something. Mr. Geno Brio made it very clear in November of 2017 that those items would not be made public until all was said and done. But is there any information that you can give to the taxpayers of North Haven about things that may already be settled from the errors and omissions log or anything that might be a possible introduction to the errors and omissions log?
It's one document, so we can't release portions of it. It's... if we come to a conclusion, if the committee comes to a conclusion on what to do with the errors and omissions log, it's one package. It's so it's not... we can't do a piecemeal and release information piecemeal. It's all...
I gotcha. I'm just... my point is that in November of 2017, this was being asked for, and now it's two years later. This has been up for a while. Is there a reasonable timeframe that we should expect to be able to have a look at the errors and omissions?
Well, I would say within the next couple of months because we need to iron out this window issue, and then we can... we need to settle it once and for all anyway before we end the project. So it'll be soon. But just like anything with... everything with this project, it kind of has... extends itself.
It's a big project.
And so this is just part of that.
For the bid alternate list, do you now have an understanding of what items will not be delivered as part of the project off the bid alternate list?
Sure.
That you could provide us with?
Absolutely.
We provided most of that at the... that big meeting we had with... that was the finances were reviewed.
Yep. That was December of 2017.
Right. Nothing much has changed since then.
Well, so my kind of... the point of my questioning is if there are items on the errors and omissions log that might allow us to do things on the bid alternate list, is that something that we're looking at, or should they be treated as kind of two separate pockets of the project?
Well, it... that's a hard question to answer because we don't know the results of the discussion with the errors and omissions.
So I mean, I realize that we are not privy to that information, but are you guys privy to that information?
Sure.
So the VE... the VE log, there's alternates. There's two lists that we... that when the GMP came in, that's the guaranteed maximum price proposal from the contractor, came in. There was alternates that we incorporated in the project, and that's a strategy to maintain within the budget.
Sure.
And then there were, as a result of the bids that came in, the construction manager and the trade contractors proposed these VE alternates, i.e. the floor refinishing. So the ones that were the alternates were ones that we came up with before we went out to bid. And we certainly have the list of ones that have been accepted or not accepted. And I think the ones that have not been incorporated, I think, well, first of all, I would keep them separate. First of all, I would keep the two buckets separate because we came up with that well before we came into construction. The ones that haven't been accepted, I would recommend, you know, we evaluate those for what's the impact back into the school? Is it, in fact, an impact or does it... was it a betterment to your programming, your space program, the educational products in the school, and what's that impact on those? We'd have to look at the remaining ones, but that list is... we know that list.
So is it fair to say that with the windows being completed and like the finishing touches being put on cracks and moldings and stuff like that, that we should, as a board, not expect additional large projects out of this project?
We don't have the money for additional large projects.
That makes sense. I just wanna like make sure that that's clear. I've been getting a lot of questions on that specifically around the track, so I think that's just good to kind of clear up. Okay. Do we... did we use the same flooring contractor for the replacement as the refinishing on the gym?
I believe it is the same guy as Kenbow, and I believe they did the refinishing as well. The same one.
And...
Now, that did go out to bid when we went out for the new gym floor. There were three bidders that bid on it. They were the lowest qualified bidder.
One last question, and then I promise I'm done. How much is spent on maintenance-type items like cracks in the corridors, repainting, and the... with the vinyl for the staircase? I think that that would be pertinent to us as like a continued maintenance of the building. I'd like to just kind of understand what has been spent.
Well, it's... I wouldn't call them maintenance. I mean, you think that the floors, the edging and the cracked tiles should not happen. So it should not be a maintenance issue.
That's a warranty issue.
What we're finding is because any time you do a renovation, you're gonna run into... the new part of the building has been fine, except for that stair thing. But the cracked tiles and everything are transition points where the new and the old come together, and the ceramic tile, of course, is very unforgiving. And if there's any kind of movement, it's gonna crack. If it was vinyl or some other type of material that had some flexibility, it would be different. So what we're doing is we're finding where there are weaknesses, and we see the cracks, we're putting in some additional joints that allow some more flexibility so those won't crack in the future. So the ceramic tile should not be a maintenance issue going forward. That should be pretty...
Yeah, there's in the old building, in the gym corridor, anybody's been down there, there's an old expansion joint that wasn't identified. If you look on the side of the wall, in the CMU wall, you'll see one vertical joint versus having them staggered that you'll see typically. This is a vertical, and this is an expansion joint that we should have put this expansion that Gary's referring to at that location because that coincides with the expansion of the building. So they tend to... they're not forgiven. They may pop a little bit where they crack. So that's what we're gonna be putting one shortly.
Thanks.
Yeah. The rest of this warranty work, whether workmanship, you know, that should have been better, but that's on the contractor to repair.
I have a question to piggyback on Amanda's about... so you utilized the same company that refinished the floors to replace the floors?
Mm-hmm.
And it was upon their advice that we didn't replace the floor to start with? And I may have missed this at the beginning, did they credit us the refinishing cost after they put the second floor in? Did it cost extra money to refinish, polish the whole thing after the floor was laid?
There were two independent contracts. One was the refinishing and one was the replacement. They didn't credit us anything from the original replacement... refinishing because it was our decision to go that way.
Right.
As a committee.
But I'm sure that in many renovation projects, we've gone from a non-air-conditioned gym to an air-conditioned gym, so that the contraction of the boards would have been something that they could recommend as experts in flooring, that they could have projected would happen. Because it's not like it was a strange event. It was something that's pretty typical.
It's hard, you know, new construct... any kind of construction, it's hard to anticipate what's gonna happen in the future. We actually even hired a hardwood flooring expert to come in and give us some opinions on what happened. So there's just a lot of discussion about what the actual cause of it was. This is the thought that it was the change in environment that caused these boards to contract. As far as the original contract, when he refinished it, it was his best judgment at the time. It was... we took it. It was... he offered that as an alternative.
Okay.
We accepted that as an alternative.
Okay. So the onus is on us for that decision?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Thanks.
If hindsight was 2020... you know, hindsight's 2020. So that was... we should not have probably gone that rotten originally, but we thought we could possibly save some money in...
We actually have another project, a smaller gym currently afterwards that they're looking to... they were looking to potentially replace because of the air conditioning. That one hasn't moved, so it's really a case-by-case basis in the facility, I think, over 50 years has been in place. I think you had a lot of moisture that got into that floor, being an athletic floor, probably a lot of different types, that got soaked up probably in that floor and through it, that probably contributed probably to some of the smells and odors that were in there. And then when we got the air conditioning, it just drew everything out of it. And I think, you know, a combination of that and some other factors that are probably unknown probably contributed to that, unfortunately.
What are you thinking the issue is with the windows? I know you said you're still testing it, but is it the location of the windows? Is it the size of the windows? What do you think it... what are some possibilities?
I think it's really the detailing of the windows. So it's an existing wall. It's the existing gym. It's the gym that... the wall that extends up from the first floor. So we have our roof, and then it's the part that extends up about four feet. And it's a concrete, 12-inch concrete block wall there. And in these systems, there's a combination of the windows, we call flashing and membrane flashing, that basically the system is meant so when it rains, if it does get water, it's supposed to let it out. But we're... and I read the initial findings, and I'm still kind of, being an engineer, I'm still digging into the details. It's pretty complicated. But there's a multitude of materials that go into this system that we're evaluating. Maybe should have the base of the window been higher? Should have flashed and returned up higher so that water wouldn't dam up? What we're finding is it's damming up and it coming back into the wall is what we're finding. So we're evaluating was it not detailed properly or was it detailed properly and not installed properly? And that's what we're still evaluating. That's either it was detailed properly and not installed or vice versa, we think.
So in either of those instances, that would not cost us more money, right? It would either be the installation or the material?
If it's one... if it's that situation, yeah, it would be the case. We're still investigating it if there's a third cause, you know, that maybe we find that, okay, it was designed properly, installed, and that has happened, but you wouldn't think so, you know, a light person, you think common sense. You designed it properly, install it, it's correct. But we've had cases in parts of construction where it's just that unforeseen type of condition that, you know, I think you've seen it all. And we're still investigating that at this time, so...
Thanks.
Rationale, yes.
Let's wrap it up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you both for attending.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And also appreciate all the hard work putting it together because it is a beautiful school and it's a good learning center. Okay. Thank you again. Our next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which is the minutes of the September 12, 2019 meeting, as well as the resignation of North Haven Middle School Social Study teacher effective June 2020 of Bernice Montegna. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I just wanna say that Bernice has been with us for about 20 years. She started as a kindergarten teacher at Green Acres, went to Montawaes, taught as a fifth-grade teacher, and then volunteered to come to the middle school mid-year about 15 years ago because a teacher had to leave because of health reasons. And she volunteered to be a science teacher. And she was really a very good sport about it. And then she moved to her language arts. So I'd like to thank her for, you know, the work she's done.
We wish her well. We have her till the end of the year. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Einzo, how are ya?
Yes.
Can we have your Board of Education student report?
Yep. So there's a lot going on in school right now. Junior class is doing their annual cookie and pie fundraiser, and the president of that class actually recently contacted Yankee Candle, so they're actually gonna start a Yankee Candle fundraiser for the junior class. For seniors, we have the seniors' senior breakfast coming up, which is December 3rd. We have our Consetta Flower fundraiser also on its way. We have the concession stand for next Friday for our senior class fundraiser. We have the Coach for Nike Bowl, so the girls are excited for that, November 25th. We just had a meeting today planning out pep rallies and things like that. We have library choir performances for the choral group, One Voice on... at the library on the 19th. So, yeah, a lot of fun stuff coming up, and yeah.
So I love that choir group. Where did you say it was going to?
Um, One Voice is performing at the library on the 19th at 2:00.
May I make a comment?
The drama is... the drama production is at the end of this month, correct? Is that almost...
Yes, auditions are coming up in November.
No, the drama production, Almost May?
Oh, the Fall Show?
Yeah, the Fall Show.
Yes, it's coming up. They're actually... they're doing rehearsals right now. I'm not exactly sure on the date of the shows, but it should be coming up pretty soon.
Yeah, I think it's October 24th, 2026.
Yeah, really sooner.
Yeah.
What is that?
It's the Fall...
No, no, what is the play?
Oh.
Almost May.
Almost May. There you go.
It's a romantic comedy. I think it's like nine short plays.
Yeah.
So what is the next production? Auditions are starting.
That's for Phantom of the Opera, that's a musical?
Yeah.
Oh, the reservoir under the floor. I also wanted to say that I went to the Fall Festival of the Fall Harvest, or it was that Tracy's Culinary. Oh, it was excellent. It was very well done, so...
I hope they do something in maybe a spring blooming or something.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah.
Because it was... there was 20 of us, and we were sitting at a long table, five-course meal.
What a...
Yeah. It was fantastic. They did... we clapped for all the staff because they were fantastic, but we talked about to do a seasonal one.
Please work it out. Thank you. My report, no, I know I often say it a lot when I come up here, but if anyone ever gets the chance, the pictures are always changed, but the photography pictures in the hallway are absolutely beautiful. There's... I can bring up a couple. One I just looked at was White Birch Trees, which was beautiful. We have such talented, talented students and our art director and our teachers, and I don't know if they get enough credit, so I really wanna just tell them that it's absolutely beautiful. And one of the thoughts in my mind after seeing that is maybe we can go to some of our local banks or businesses and ask them if they'd like to display some of our students'
and ask them if they'd like to display some of our students' artwork. You know, not just on that art day we have, Art Beat, where we have that at 25th, but something throughout.
And they had the show at Moonrise in the spring I had gone. It was beautiful.
Yeah, I forgot about that, Moonrise. Yeah, it's just beautiful, beautiful works. We're really, really fortunate to have such a wonderful art program. Also, just wanted to let the board know that I got a letter from the State of Connecticut, State Board of Education. Basically, I'll kind of just read it, and this is in response to your letter received on August 29th, 2019, which provides notification of the appointment of Mr. Patrick Kuzierka Superintendent of Schools for the North Haven Public Schools. We have to write a letter to them and let them know that we retain Patrick as our Superintendent of Schools. And we just got the letter that says, from our Commissioner of Education, that confirms that Patrick Sturck is a Bureau of Education Standards and Certification records, indicates he holds an initial educator certificate, endorsed for Superintendent of Schools, which is valid for three years. Mr. Sturck will keep renewing that license unless he continues to have B.O.R.'s triple E virus and things. So basically, they just reconfirmed Mr. Sturck's eligibility for the appointment, and they asked us to extend their congratulations to you. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And when we had our meeting last month, I had said that one of the things that I think is important for us to do at the beginning of every school year, is just go over our bylaws on meeting contact, conduct. So I'm just going to read them. It's our policy number 9325A. As a reminder to everyone, policies are always on our Board of Education on our website, and they can all be looked at at any time. They're constantly being updated to new laws. As we work with Shipman and Goldman, they're very helpful with giving us our updated bylaws and working with our policy committee. So I'll just read this really quickly. Meetings of the Board of Education shall be conducted by the chairperson in a manner consistent with the bylaws. The conduct of the meeting shall enable board members to consider problems to be solved, weigh evidence, and make wise decisions intended to solve problems. Board members shall receive, consider, and take any needed action with respect to reports of the accomplishments of the students or of the school systems. Individuals or groups may address the board concerning any subject that lies within its jurisdiction with the following guidelines. Five minutes may be allotted to each speaker. A maximum of 20 minutes will be given to each subject matter. No oral presentation will include charges or complaints against any employee of the Board of Education, regardless of whether or not the employee is identified in the presentation by name or by another reference, which identifies an individual. All complaints against employees can be submitted to the Board of Education under provisions of the Board of Education bylaws. In the event that a Board of Education meeting is interrupted by any person or group of persons who render the orderly conduct of the meeting unfeasible, an order cannot be restored by the removal of individuals who are willfully interrupting the meeting. The Chairman of the Board of Education shall order the meeting room cleared and continue in session. Media representatives, unless they were disorderly, shall be permitted to attend sessions held in this manner. After time has passed, the Chairman and his or her discretion may suspend the board's meeting and invite back those members of the public not responsible for the disruption. Action by the board, the board will only act upon items listed on the agenda published for the meeting, except when an item of business not included on the agenda is considered and acted on by two-thirds vote of the members. Just read that, and just a reminder again that our policies are all on our website.
Can I ask a question about that real quick? Just to clarify, that applies to public, the time constraints apply to?
Public comment.
Thank you.
Now, you could go on and on.
You know me. Let us know, we need a new policy.
Yes, no, that is for public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, any unfinished business that we need to discuss?
Yeah, I wanted to, you had sent us the equity information, and I was looking through that, and as far as it pertains to English Language Arts at the high school, and was looking through some of the proportionality to our student body makeup and the reflection of that proportionality in higher-level classes. I was wondering what sort of discussions are planned around sort of making this a little bit more within the range that we're looking for.
So it's something that we're just venturing into as well. So meeting with the high school administration and discussing that is really the infancy stages at this point. So I think that's where we're going to begin and move from there. If you have any specific things you'd like us to kind of address that you see in immediate need, please let us know. But we're just, we were going to act on the data just as all.
That makes sense. And that's the sort of thing that I would look at, and I would look at, I think that this information around the percentage of kids in our AP classes was really helpful. For instance, 79% of our student body is white, yet 85% of those students are reflected in AP.
We know that as well.
Yeah, but if we look at African-American, there's 3.84% are African-American, but only 2.2% are AP. So to sort of see if we can figure out what's preventing an equalization of that proportionality would be terrific, especially among Latinx. And are there plans for us to look into this in other departments?
There are now that we have received that data. We want to venture out to see if there's misalignment, why? If it aligns, why? We want to find out some answers to the questions. So yes.
That would be great. All right, so just.
And I think engaging the guidance counters is important too.
Absolutely.
So that they're certain to be looking to students around opportunities and really making sure that they know it's available too.
Fantastic. Awesome. And I think that this was great, and also the way that it was presented, this table was really helpful.
Good, okay.
Even, and this is a quick visual, but if we could put these numbers with the tape, this, that would be absolutely outstanding. Yeah, keep us posted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any new business that anyone would like to bring up? Okay, moving on to reports of Standing Committee. Doc, Ace's?
Yes, we had our meeting today. Actually, it was a very speedy meeting. A lot of the discussion was Ace's design team is planning the next steps, the next, the next five years, because they want to stay relevant, they want to continue to grow and meet the needs of their students, and also our regional needs. So they have plenty of handouts. And then, this wasn't a discussion, they want to give this to the EL teachers. And it's a guide. That's fascinating. It has all, I mean, they have foreign languages, I didn't even know were foreign languages. And then they have new and challenging vowel sounds, learning English, and consonant sounds. And there's all kinds of sentence order. I thought it was just a wonderful resource guide.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to the, so that was it.
Thank you. Curriculum instruction planning? Dr. O'Brien, who would like to wish belated happy birthday to?
Thank you. We reviewed, we met earlier tonight, and we reviewed eight field trips. Nature's Classroom, Music Department trip to Boston, FPS International Conference to UMS, UMass, High School Fashion and Design 1 and 2 Field Trip to New York City Garment District, one of two possibilities for the North Haven High School Culinary Arts Trip, either Walt Disney World or Havens Cooking School, North Haven High School Interior Design Field Trip to Newport, North Haven High School Culinary Field Trip to Newport, and North Haven High School Art Field Trip to Javits Convention Center in New York City. And we recommend those for approval.
With your permission, can I just jump in here and kind of give my report because it's connected to that?
Sure.
I wanted to share with the board about the change in the high school music trip. We had been back and forth about that. And as you know, we were the only school signed up for the Toronto trip, so therefore we propose the Boston trip. And as of today, there are a total of 16 competing ensembles going to that venue. So that will be really nice. I also wanted to share just a quick snapshot of data around the Grade 5 trip, because I just think it's important for us all to be on the same page about that. There was an initial parent survey that sent out to kind of get a sense of who's interested in Nature's Classroom versus the Common Ground Day Trips. There, out of 160 responses, 102 will potentially attend Nature's Classroom, and 38 will attend the Common Ground Day Trips. And due to an increase in price at Nature's Classroom, it is proposed that the trip be reduced to three nights and four days. So it's a reduction of one night away. Just so, you know, I don't know if everybody had read that in the materials that were sent. So I just wanted to share that. And lastly, we slipped in a garden club proposal at the high school that came in a little bit late. There were 66 students interested in joining that club, Patrick Lawrence and Val Fortney, a science teacher over there will facilitate it.
So just really quickly, my question before we go to all of these voting. Nature's Classroom, are we making people aware that there is financial aid and scholarship if they need to go, want to go?
The principals will be communicating and holding some parent information sessions.
That's great. It's a wonderful opportunity. The second one is, where is the Havens Cooking School?
Um, New York City.
Okay. All right, and, okay, someone go through each one of these? Unfortunately, I know there's eight of them, we have to go on each one individually. I saw that look there.
Before we go through them, can I say one quickly?
Sure.
I just want to thank the teachers that are working so hard, and the, and the CO19 that are working so hard to make these opportunities available for our students. I was looking through these field trips, and I'm floored by the amount of value that we're able to add to our student experience by going to places like Mood, which is like on my bucket list.
Bingo.
Yeah.
They might be looking for chaperones.
Sign me up. I want to pet that dog. So I just want to say thank you very much to everybody. I know that they are expensive, but these do seem like an exceptional value for our school.
It's good to, it's good for us to acknowledge that. Okay, here goes. May I have a motion to approve the district-wide Grade 5 Field Trip to Nature's Classroom in Holbrook, Connecticut, from May 11 through 14? Thank you, Wes. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Music Department Field Trip to Boston Mass of Chisels from April 23rd to April 26, 2020?
Moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. May I have an approval of the FPS International Conference at UMass Amherst on June 3rd through 7th for grades, excuse me, June 3rd through 7th, 2020, for grades 4 through 12? May I have a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Fashion and Design Class 1 and 2 Field Trip to New York City on, in April 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Excuse me, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the North Haven High School Culinary Trip, one or the other, to Walt Disney World on April 24th, 27th, 2020?
So moved.
For Havens.
I just, I wanted to do one.
April 22nd, 24th, 2020. Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Interior Design Field Trip to Newport, Rhode Island in November or December 2019?
Moved.
Second? Second. Discussion? Just a quick question, and this will also go to culinary?
They'll go together.
They'll go together?
They just put them in separately, so we kept it that way to be clean in terms of sign-off.
What about if their dates, for some reason, we have snow?
Then they'll adjust.
If we have a snow date?
As long as the board has typically been okay with if we have to adjust dates. That's kind of why they left it open, right?
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Culinary Field Trip to Newport, Rhode Island in November or December 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, last one. Approval of the North Haven High School Art Field Trip to Photo Plus Expo at the Javits Convention Center in New York City on October 24th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you for letting me go out of work.
Finance and operations?
Finance and operations met earlier this evening. At this time of the year, it's the time that the auditors come in, so they are here. So we'll have an update probably at the next meeting of their findings. Time of the year, we're at a good spot because it's a new school year. So our insurance are in line. We did some budget transfers with a lining appropriate accounts. So we're really in a good spot at this time of the year.
Let's hope we're like that, continue through. I've read somewhere that said they're expecting a lot of the snow for us.
It's first day of the job, right?
Middle School Building Committee, Goldie's not here, but we were fully updated. North Haven Education Foundation, Joe, anything new?
There was the meetings later this month, so I haven't been able to go ahead.
Great. Policy? Anything we want to add?
Policy met earlier tonight, and we got into a heavy discussion around our proposed bullying, bullying policy. So we're about halfway through that. And next month, we'll have about five to six policies to bring forward to the board for a first read.
Great, thank you. PTA Council?
PTA Council met in September and wanted to let everybody know that on this, I'm sorry, October 26th, this trunk retreat from 4:00 to 5:00 in the high school parking lot, you do have to register in person at the rec center if you'd like to attend. There's going to be a forum on the Plague of Plastics Thursday, October 17th, from 7:00 to 9:00.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
There's a forum for a plague of plastics on October 17th, from 7:00 to 9:00 at the high school auditorium, and the screening of the movie Bagit to accompany that. There was healthy discussion of the middle school building project, but I think I have some updates to bring back this time. Clintonville enrichment classes have started, and the fifth graders are holding a Spiritware fundraiser. Boo Bingo at Clintonville will take place on October 29th, and the Fall Festival will be on the 31st. Reach Road is hosting a spooky drive-in movie night, either the 25th or the 27th this month, that's still up in the air. And they're looking at a potential fundraiser with a Northford ice rink. Green Acres has enrichment starting soon, and they're really excited about that. And they're also introducing the Square Foot Theater class, which everyone is really excited about. It will be for the NHGA. They're hosting a forum on retirement planning. They had over 100 people signed up, so they were excited about that. And SAG did attend, which is the special needs advisory group, and they were looking to partner with organizations like the PTA Council, not necessarily to raise funds, but just to partner and collaborate together. There is also a fundraiser at J-Ruse for the Education Foundation, and that is October?
Tuesday, October 22nd.
Tuesday, October 22nd.
And we are taking pre-registration. And what is that?
If you have a team.
Oh, that's trivia? It's trivia night at J-Ruse, which is going to be fun.
Well, what about, will they do, any of like the proceeds will go to it? Like, so those of us who are not?
Still working through that. Debbie Boylan is in charge of that.
Okay. So we'll find out about that, Joe, if they'll do that. Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the Standing Committee reports?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing reports are accepted. Staff communication, Mr. Sturck?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight's, my report will focus on the growth target data from the Sback this year, some things to pass around, and it'll be displayed hopefully on the screen behind you.
Some things to pass around, and it'll be displayed hopefully on the screen behind you. I don't know where to go. So the growth target data. Scoring on the Sback assessment is broken down into two different areas, the achievement area and the growth area. So the achievement is what a student scores on the assessment, one being the lowest, four being the highest, with ranges in between each of those levels. Last month, we discussed the achievement, where our district fell in comparison to our district reference group, and the state measures growth within this area by students who reach a level 3 or level 4. So 72.9% of our students reached a level 3 or level 4 in English Language Arts, and 65.1 reached the same in math. So we're going to talk tonight about the other components, actually the more complicated side of it, the growth side. And the chart at your places and displayed on the screen will go into more depth around this, and Melinda and I are going to tag team this just to make sure, because it does get complicated, we're, both of us together are good at explaining it, but we're better at understanding it, I think.
We've been revising the language all week, so.
So the state defines growth as change in achievement scores by the same student between two or more data points. Growth takes into account where the student begins and how much they have grown in relationship just to that particular student, just to themselves. For example, where they start in 3rd grade and how they progress each year within this assessment. So this growth area is broken into two different parts. It has the growth rate as well as the average percentage of target achieved. So with the growth rate, it indicates where a student met her his individually set growth target. Now, this growth target is set by the state. And this is an all or nothing measure. Either a student meets this or they do not, there's no range. So as a district average, as you can see up there, 46.8% of the students met 100% or higher of their growth target in ELA and 51.9 in math. The students need to achieve, remember, remember, students need to achieve 100% or higher in this growth target area or they do not meet it.
Because you can exceed the target that the state puts forth for you. So if they say that you need to get 70 points and a student gets 85 points, they've exceeded it. That's how you can get over the 100. But that measure is just by kid to his or herself. That's it.
And the other part of it is the average percentage of target achieved. And this measure accounts for the amount of growth made towards the target. So on average, from grades 3 to 8, 64.6% of our students met 100% of their ELA target and 69.1 met it in math. So if you think of it as a 100% threshold, that would be all of our students making their target, 65%, met it in English Language Arts, and almost 70% met it in math. And then on the following two pages is how, where we fall in comparison to our district reference group. Overall, we've performed, we've performed well. You can see, once you look at the districts, they vary over measure and over content area, but if you look at our progress over the last three years, we do show very steady incremental growth.
Just one thing I want to just clarify a little bit on that percentage of the target achieved, just to kind of give an example on that, this is how much of the growth target was achieved by the student. So just for like easy math sake, if the student's established growth target was 100 points and they got 65, they didn't meet their growth rate, but they got 65% of the target achieved. They got a portion of it. So when you look at that, what's really, I think, helpful to us as a district, we're pleased with our number of students at goal and above, but we're also pleased to see that more, we're achieving more on the growth targets, students individually and collectively as a group. If you look over those three-year span, you can see incrementally that we're getting stronger in terms of children kind of improving against themselves, and we can't lose sight of that because that's really important. And that goes across special education, EL, and regular ed population. So we're digging into those now into subgroups, but we're seeing growth across all subgroups, which is good. And just one last piece on that, when we get our accountability reports, like those report cards by district and school, they use the measure of the second one, the percentage of target achieved. That first growth rate isn't what's compiled into that. So that's, that measure becomes really important as we look at the performance of the building in the district.
Thank you. Looking good. Thank you for explaining it, too.
It's really, it's very complicated. Each year as we get it, we literally have to go back into the PowerPoints and like refresh our old memory and try to put it into clear cut language, so.
Thank you.
Overall, it looks like our Sback scores are the highest they've been in the past five years.
They're steadily, and remember, those are district averages when we talk about that, so you know, we've got ebbs and flows, right?
We're always looking for a steady incremental growth, and we have that across all the measures.
May I ask, because, I guess because of my background, I'm always concerned about the students who are scoring the ones and the twos. And you know, many of them are having, you know, special ed support or interventionist, do, we always see kind of how their target, their growth rate is.
Their growth target information is honestly more valuable, I think, than their one. Do you know what I'm saying? Is, are they making the growth? And that's where we're seeing that, so that's really important.
Because I've always believed that a student that went from a 1 to a 2 probably worked so much harder than somebody that went from a 3 to a 4.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you a quick question? How are we assigning growth targets to fours? Like?
The state puts, right, that gets really tricky there.
Yeah.
So all of these growth targets are established by psychometricians from the testing company and the state, and we have no part of that. They're literally in fixed charts. So depending how a student performed in, you know, year one, the target is established for them that they should make this many points to either meet it or not meet it the next year, and it keeps building. So it is, it is tricky, and the more students we have performing at levels 3 and 4.
The lower our growth, I mean.
You know, we believe that all students should make continuous progress, and we're hoping for that, but there is a realism to that and...
There's a plateau to it as well.
Right, exactly. So I think that you have to look at data through a lot of lenses and really be balanced about it, because if you swing too much to only care about the 3s and 4s, you lose sight of the growth piece. You can't just look at the growth piece because, you know, it really, I think you have to be even keeled about.
And it's one data point, too, so we have so many others that we can see the growth if it's not demonstrated in this particular assessment.
I think you guys do a fantastic job of looking at the data without living and dying by it.
Yes.
Because I think there's so much context behind these numbers, and I appreciate you taking the time to kind of walk us through this, but our data does look excellent. You know, I was looking at our district reference group, and North Haven spends 4% less on average annually than our peers in our district reference group, but our ELA scores are nine points higher and our math scores are seven points higher. And to me, that's indicative of like a really good value that we're providing to folks and them here.
And I thought something really important for the citizens of North Haven to hear, too, is something we should, I think we should talk about more often. It's something for them to realize that we're going, being ahead, spending less money than our peers. Well, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, guys.
My report was just part of that and other stuff.
Thank you. Jen Stewart, Director of Student Service?
I just have a few things tonight. Last month, you asked about numbers of special ed students at elementary schools and secondary. So at the elementary school, so pre-K through 5, there's 164 students, and I should say, I pulled the numbers on Friday, last Friday. For 6 to 12, there's 216 students. We have 13 students in North Haven Transition Partnership, and then our, we do have three students who attend a transition program that is not North Haven Transition. They either go to Step Forward, pretty much all go to Step Forward, and then the rest 30 are out of district students. So our meet and mingle is set for the 15th from 6 to 7 in collaboration with the SAG group, so Mrs. Hatton and I have been collaborating to plan this evening. I've gotten emails, can, you know, I've gotten emails from regular ed parents, can they come? And I said, sure, so it's open to anybody. I've received emails, can you, can I bring my son or daughter? And I said, yes, so it'll really be nice to see what kind of turnout we get. So it's really just an opportunity for networking so parents can have support, and that ties into, so I did send out a special ed survey to all parents, no matter special ed or not, and you can choose to take it to really understand like how, what we can do to keep more, keep our department moving forward, and it ties into, we had a conversation, Patrick and I, with Mrs. Hatton about getting the community involved with special ed and knowing how we can educate parents. So the survey started yesterday and it closes next Friday, so we'll see what we can get.
Look forward to you letting us know.
Yeah, I'll probably, it'll be for November, I can share.
Just to go again, your meet and greet is October 15.
At the middle school library, they're so gracious to host us.
Okay, North Haven Middle School Library. Thank you. I just have to say, I'm really happy, pleased to see some of these meet and greets. I don't know, Mr. Sturrock had something at the end of September, with McKenna, they had a meet your superintendent and assistant superintendent here on a Saturday morning. It wasn't as well attended as we would have liked for a first one, but we had people here, which was fantastic. We're going to do another one in January timeframe, and then with what you're doing, I think it, I think it's, we're hitting our goal of engaging the community. So I want to bring that up and say thank you, everyone, for that.
Just two cents about that survey. It's not very long, it's very well put together, it asks some really good questions, and it's not something that's going to be very burdensome for people to do, so I thought it was very well put together.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Pam?
Just a couple of things to share with you. We did hold the secretary's workshop last Friday. I think it was a really worthwhile gathering. We reviewed purchasing processes, payroll issues, MUNIS reports. We talked a little bit about the upcoming 2021 budget development, and we talked about field trips, building rentals, things that the secretaries are counted upon to do amidst all their other things.
Secretary's Administrative Assistance, the school, and those up here?
Correct. It was the primary secretary from each of the schools, and it was also the special ed secretary and a couple of the ladies from here.
That's because they had like your own PD day.
Yeah, exactly.
That's one of the first times that's been done?
I think they might have done one last year, I'm not really sure, but I do think, I was sharing with Patrick and Melinda earlier today that I would like to do another one before the end of the school year, because I have found that that is the group that we count on to do so much in the schools and often are overlooked for providing support. We're also going to take it a step further and go and sit with them at the schools to help them one-on-one with MUNIS, with anything that they're having issues with, with the budget development. It's very important that we build that relationship, and they're, they're wonderful. I mean, they're very committed to the district, they want to do all the right things. It was great. We learned as much from them, we in the business office, as I think we were able to share with them. So it was a great afternoon, and we really enjoyed it. Also, I attended RFP training in Hartford for outsourcing food service a few weeks ago, and we will have to go out to bid for a food service management company. I probably won't get around to doing that until sometime in January, the specifications are very detailed. The state, of course, is willing to support us and help us get through that process, so stay tuned for that. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank publicly our business office staff. As you may recall, we have been down a person, our payroll clerk has been out on leave for a few months now, and each and every one of the ladies in the office have been wonderful stepping up to the plate, because it really hasn't been easy, but they've been great, and I can't thank them enough for that. I think we're really forming a great team. We all work very well together, and they've moved into some expanded space across the hall, so they're very happy about that as well. So it's all good, we're moving in the right direction. That's basically my report, and I'll just move on quickly to the 1920 fiscal year. As Brian mentioned, we're off to an okay start. As I've said before, there were some concerns with some of the surprises that we found in the budget we inherited, but we're working really hard to mitigate it. We're watching all our accounts, and we're getting some positive news, and then we get a little negative news, but at the moment, I think we're trending right where we need to be, but as I said, we'll continue to watch that very closely. Jen and I meet weekly, because special ed, of course, is always a very volatile part of the budget. So so far, so good. I did share with the finance committee the transfers that we have made to date and primarily just moving as needed. As I said, we mitigated those accounts that were wiped out in error, and we're doing the best we can with what we have. So I think we are making all the right moves, I think we're moving forward positively, and as I've said before, it's kind of in a scales pace right now, but at least it's in the right direction. And the only other thing I wanted to note was our insurance claims, this was reported, are running favorably at the moment, it is early, but I think it's important also to note that the ACES Collaborative is growing. We did add East Haven, that was reported last month, that resulted in a credit to both the town and the Board of Ed, which will help with the budget as well. So again, I think the collaborative is hoping to continue to grow and offer savings to its members ultimately, and as we know, I think ACES does a lot of good things for its members, it's a strong res. So that's my report, and if anyone has any questions, happy to address them.
Thank you. We have on our agenda, we have two things, two things that we'll discuss when the time comes. I'd like to have a motion to remove from our action item of the approval of the Home Depot donation of a shed to the North Haven Athletic Department. May I have a motion to remove that action item from our agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So now we'll go into discussion on why we're, we're taking it off of this agenda and putting it on almost someday next month. If you want to talk on that, John.
Steve Blumenthal was, had been reached out by one of our current employees who has a connection to Home Depot, and they would like to donate a shed to be placed on the turf for different types of equipment. However, we're still waiting on a detailed information sheet from Home Depot so I can present to all of you what the shed looks like and where we place and those type things. We thought we'd have it ready for this meeting, but it's not available yet, so hopefully Steve's going to get it for next month.
Okay. Shall I have a motion to remove that action item from our agenda? We had a discussion, so move. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Justice of reminder, we do have a policy on the Board of Ed, I don't remember the dollar amount, $500, that's it? I thought it was higher than that. Any gift to the school over $500 has to be approved by the Board of Ed.
So with that, the concession stand, the donated labor, does that need to be approved?
I'd have to remove, review the policy.
To be, yeah, to be consistent with everything, should we be...
Concession stand at the high school?
The one that they're, and Patrick, the field house that they were putting together, he said it was running slow because the donated labor.
Carpenters and plumbers and stuff.
Right.
His labor is...
At a good point, we'll look into that.
Because it's donated services.
Right.
But that's, but that's being funded by a grant to the town.
That's why I'm trying to...
And it's town property, too.
Right, so, just, all I'm just saying is, just, so we separate...
Are you talking about the concession stand at the high school?
Well, the field house.
The new building, the new building, yeah.
The $500,000 grant for that, whatever.
That's not reported, that that comes through?
Got you, but it came up on your report, and that's why I just assumed.
Yes, okay.
But that's a good question to try and go further, too.
Yeah.
It's a related matter, that old white building that's at the other end of the track, that looks like it's going to fall down.
Yeah, I have a little information on that. We're going to push it down. Tactfully. So yeah, I actually, I spoke, safely, I spoke to actually Mr. Frida this past Tuesday about it, because Steve had brought it to my attention late last year to remove it for graduation, because it doesn't look great sitting out there for graduation, unfortunately, it was just pretty tight around that time, so, but it is town property, so Mr. Frida allowed us to take it down.
That's why I was wondering if it was town property.
So we're going to... So we're going to, we're going to get on that.
Okay. Thank you for that, and we'll check on that other, that was a good point, Brian. Next, I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School preschool program employee wage increase.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Have discussion on this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide some information. When I first began here, back in the spring, I was approached by the coordinators who explained that the staff for the high school preschool program had not received an increase in a few years. They are not union, I guess they've kind of fallen through the cracks. Upon review, there was some discussion about, do you have a budget? Can we afford to do this? To make a long story short, I worked with them over the summer and particularly since they returned in late August. And I promised them I would bring this to the board. I reviewed it with Mr. Sturck to make certain that he was comfortable, and based on their current enrollment, they have 21 enrolled students, based on the income that is projected for this year, and offsetting their budget that we put together, they have a projected year-end balance of about $1,780, and a 2% increase to the three employees would be $1,700. They were very grateful even with the consideration of a 2% increase, and I told them we felt it was fair and equitable to what the union employees are receiving as well. So that's our recommendation.
Okay. Any comments, any discussion?
Just my two cents is the work that happens in that wing is remarkable, and what they do with the students that come through there and the challenges that they face is, is really nothing short of remarkable. It's a good, it's a very good program. It's a great benefit to the district. I, I think it's the worth of it.
Now, these are preschool teachers at the high school, not at grade four, correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, and I think they're right, they do get overlooked.
They do. It appears to be true.
I remember the last time that they got a refund, several years ago.
We'll try not to overlook them next. We do have to let them live within a budget, and that's the challenging part sometimes, but we're able to do it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Please, Ellen Wilson, thank you for all that they do for us.
Thanks.
Okay, are there any public comments this evening? Hi.
Hi. Everett Bishop, North Haven citizen. I just had two quick questions, actually. First, since we just finished talking about the 2% wage increase at the preschool, Pamela, was that, is that $1,700 of an increase for each of the employees?
No, that's total for all three.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure about that.
And that also includes employer taxes.
Perfect, okay. And then my second question was for Melinda and Patrick real quick about the growth percentage, that whole table. When the state decides those independent scores for the individuals, what are those based on exactly? Just their grades, their test scores? Can you speak a little more on that?
Let me take it. So, psychometricians set those. I have no idea how that happens. It's in a fixed chart. If you go on the State Department website under Accountability and Performance, you'll probably be able to find it under S-Back. And so like, if a student got a certain score, scaled score they call it, then the target of how much growth they're supposed to make is set off of that.
Got you.
They're banded, kind of. So it's not like, you know, every single number has a different one. You're kind of bucketed, so...
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other public comment tonight? Okay, any future agenda items? Okay, well, with that, there's no exception to the session, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's after them, right?
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from